Hello and good evening, and welcome everyone to the city council meeting. If you could all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and we'll have that followed by the invocation this evening, brought by Councilman Mike Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Holy God, we humbly ask for your presence with us and your blessing upon us tonight as we conduct city business on behalf of our citizens. Give us open hearts, open minds, wisdom and insight as we make decisions that provide for the well-being of the people. Thank you for the privilege of serving the people of Bonner Springs, and may we never take that privilege for granted. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone being here this evening. One of the high honors of being mayor is the opportunity to return proclamations. And if I could have the veterans that are here this evening come forward, the VFW. See, I didn't make the same mistake I've made before. The proclamation reads, whereas in every generation, members of our armed forces have answered the call of our nation's hour of need, they have defended our freedom and way of life, and whereas many from Bonner Springs and Wyandotte County shared this sacrifice, whereas we Americans are blessed with the freedom made possible by the service and sacrifice of so many, it is fitting and just that our entire nation honors and pays special tribute to our prisoners of war and those who remain missing. And whereas we honor these Americans who have been prisoners of war, we remember those who are still missing in action and renew our commitment to keep searching until all are accounted for. And whereas the flag of the National League of Families of American prisoners and missing in Southeast Asia is flown over many locations across the country, the flag reminds us of our pledge to seek a full accounting for all still missing. Whereas the National POW MIA Recognition Day is September 16th, 2022. Therefore, I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2022, as POW MIA Recognition Day in Bonner Springs, Kansas, and urge all citizens to join me in saluting all American prisoners of war and those missing in action, and to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities, in witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and the seal of the City of Bonner Springs. Thank you all.
As Jeff mentioned, Friday is actually the National Remembrance Day for POW MIA, and the Wyandotte County Veterans of Foreign Wars VFW plus 6401 will be doing a ceremony at the Wyandotte County Lake at the Vietnam-Korean War Memorial there at the entrance of the lake, 91st and Leaworth Road, 5:30 Friday evening, and you're invited to attend. And just so, a couple of facts, because there's actually like almost 80,000 some from World War II on that have been unaccounted for. Of course, the majority of those are from World War II, but from Korea, there was 101 from Kansas that was unaccounted for, but some of those have been accounted for. There were, there's still 12 from Wyandotte County that are unaccounted for from the Korean conflict. And then from Vietnam, there was originally 42, you know, missing in action and so forth in Vietnam from Kansas, and 18 of those have been accounted for. There are still four from Wyandotte County that are unaccounted for, and there's actually three from Johnson County. So, you know, these are, there's an ongoing deal. They, they sent me a DVD that's just a short synopsis showing all the pains that they go to and the efforts they go to to search the particular sites where the last known where someone was and try to find remains. And I'll tell you, it's quite, quite a process that they go through. So we need to continue to put the government to continue to force them to continue to search and to find those, because if anyone has ever had someone that's missing and not accounted for, I'll tell you what, there's no closure there, you know, and so it's very, very important. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm sorry, our first presentation this evening is from the Wyandotte County District Attorney, Mark Dupree. Sir? Push that button.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My Public Information Officer, Mr. Jonathan Carter, is passing out just a little chart and numbers so that you all can follow along with us. While he's doing that, I want to say, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for having me here. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you all and to speak to you. I do absolutely want to pay my respect to the Chief of Police, who I do see in the back of the room, and so no worries if I say something wrong, I'm sure he will correct me. I hope just after I leave, just don't embarrass me while I'm here. No, Chief Naff is a great chief and has done well for you guys. Having said that, I'll start out just real quickly, as you're looking through those numbers, this is the, the first time since COVID that I've been here. I think the last time I was here was 2019, early 2019, I believe. No, it had to be 2018, because this is my first time in this building presenting. And so, now I've eaten here twice since then, so I just want to say that the, by way of update, the COVID situation concerning the courthouse, throughout the last couple of years, it has caused quite a bit of backlog. And so, in what I've handed you, and I'll go through it here in a moment, we put 2020, 2021, and 2022. And normally, I just give one year's worth of, of numbers, but I figured since it's been about three years or so, I wanted to kind of just give a rundown of, of what has happened since the last time we were here. The courthouse shut down. The Supreme Court of Kansas said in 2020, when COVID became a thing, it shut us down for nearly a year. And so, we had a backlog of cases that were there waiting to be tried before COVID hit, and then COVID hit, and so that backlog of cases that were waiting then had to get behind the cases that were coming. And throughout that time that the courthouse was shut down, charging still happened. Your officers still worked, they still submitted cases to our office, but unfortunately, we were not able to pursue the charges. We were able to file the charges with whatever crime it was, and then they sat dormant. And it was, quite frankly, wasn't until this last 12 months or so that the courthouse has really been back up and functioning at full capacity. You have all of our elected judges, and some of those elected judges, some of them decided that they're, they were not going to come back in person when others were, and so that meant that we were not going to have jury trials when, when some courtrooms but have jury trials in other courtrooms, were not able to try cases in some courtrooms but able to trial them in others. But again, we are just now at that place where now all of those judges are back actually in person. Many of them were doing court over Zoom and allowing the public to see via YouTube for some time, and, but we are now back at it. Now, I will tell you, they are utilizing, still utilizing Zoom for non-trial and non-substantive motions, so hearings that individuals just have to deal with the scheduling so that they can get a warrant removed or something of that sort. Many of the courts are still using that Zoom, and I will tell you that, that has decreased the failure to appear that many of the defendants were having, some because they didn't have transportation, others because they had to work, and others because, you know, they just didn't want to come. Well, with that Zoom, you know, they just find a wall and wherever they are, they're in court, and so it wasn't all a bad thing. So, that's just by way of catching us up. Now, what that did is it shut my office down. We end up losing about eight attorneys, and some of them were stolen, I would say poached by our colleagues in Johnson County. We have this rivalry going, I'm still trying to steal a couple of his, nonetheless, he stole quite a few of mine, had a little bit more money than I did, but we were down by eight. We are back up and running to the point that we can handle all of our cases and move. I think we are down at this point by three attorneys rather than eight, so that has definitely lightened the load. We are trying to find additional attorneys to go ahead and fill those spots. Now, moving on to programming, we are still having our expungement fair, that is something that we started back in 2018, and expungement is the process of clearing one's record from a crime if and when he or she has paid their debt to society. By statute in Kansas, which has been on the books for decades, if you have, for misdemeanor, have had no criminal charges and no issues within a year to two years, then you then can petition the court to have your record cleared. If it's a felony, only certain felonies are able to be expunged. Let me tell you which ones are not. Murder, sexual crimes, and others, those crimes are not able to be removed. So, we're talking about some drug crimes, we're talking about low-level battery crimes, those crimes are able to be removed, but you have to, by statute, have been away from your probation or parole for five years. And so, if the case has been done, you've been completely off of probation or parole for five years, you then can petition the court to get your record expunged, and it would be each charge to be expunged. We started in 2018 having an expungement fair. We found through the data that the number one job preventer in America is criminal record. One in every four United States citizens have a criminal record of some sort. And with that, I, I was not going to count, but, but since you are. And so, having said that, we believe in paying your debt to society. And so, once you've paid that debt to society, whether that is simply paying the restitution, going to probation, or going to prison, the law allows you to clear your record so that you can go on to get a better job. In 2018, we had over 100 individuals come to that fair. In 2019, likewise, the numbers continued to rise. With COVID, we had to figure out a different way to do it. We still did it, but it was all through electronic form, and we had individuals still come. We partnered with the Kansas Legal Services, they had a grant to allow individuals to file that petition, it's $199 per filing to request that expungement. That fee was paid by the Kansas Legal Services, and then the Kansas City Kansas Community College allowed us to utilize their facilities, and folks were able to come from all over, and then folks were able to utilize the internet at these different locations to do the same thing. So, we're still doing that, and we look forward to making that happen sometime in October. We usually call it the summer expungement, however, there was something on the news, I think you guys may have seen it, about the UG and some cyber attack thing that has absolutely affected what we were able to do and not do. And so, that's been pushed back into October. Hopefully, our goal is to get that done. Lastly, before I jump into these numbers, is our BOLD initiative, B-O-L-D-D. And yes, I do know how to spell, I had to add a D to make it fit my acronym. Brilliant, outstanding leaders, determined to be the difference. This is the mentoring program that the DA's office has created and has allowed us to go into the high schools and middle schools all throughout Wyandotte County. And yes, we have been to Bonner Springs, and we continue to work with all of our high schools and middle schools to let them know simply so that they can see the other side of the criminal justice system, so that they can understand that they too can be the district attorney, they can be an assistant district attorney, they can be the next chief of police. They do not have to be a defendant, and they do not have to be a victim, but the BOLD shows them how the criminal justice system works and what they can do to be involved in it on a positive side. That is stemmed from me at the age of 14, being introduced to the late Judge Cordell Meeks Jr. Before me meeting him, my freshman year in high school, I had never met a lawyer, I had never met a judge, I had never encountered anyone at the courthouse until that one day shadow experience that ultimately changed the trajectory of my life. And so, it showed and exemplified to me that I can absolutely get involved in the criminal justice system in a way that I did not know was possible. And so, that BOLD program will be up and going and moving again. It was on hold during the COVID situation, most of our students were not in class, however, we will and still rather have been in contact with principals and superintendents, and we just finished our first round of superintendent speaking within the last couple of weeks, and, and again, we have been in communication with Bonner Springs. Having said that, what you have in front of you, as I try not to hold you all up too long, these are numbers that simply show the different statute cases that we have in our office. Going back to that whole thought process of COVID and the backlog, what you find is, looking in 2022 thus far, we have 234 cases that have been submitted to our office and that we at some point decided to move forward or to dismiss based off of either the lack of ability to move forward because we didn't have the, the evidence to move forward to charge a case, or we did not feel as though we had enough to get a conviction concerning those cases. But then you have the rest of those cases that are there, and you'll see the chart in the background, I think it's the last page there, I tried to make it real easy, I need easy when we're talking about reading charts, but 46% of those are not yet pled, meaning that it has not gone to the completion. So, it hasn't had a jury trial, it hasn't had a plea negotiation, it's not guilty or it is not not guilty, nor is it guilty at this point. But that again goes to that backlog that I was speaking about, but these are the cases that we have in front of us. We have 25% of those cases that are there on, for the last three years, have been concluded and have received some type of guilty verdict on them. It's important to note that the way the process works is, once your police find that there is a crime, their job then is to get as much evidence as they can on the case, and then they communicate with our office in trying to make sure that they have everything that we need to file the charge. And my charging attorney talks back and forth with your detectives to make sure we have what we need, and then we file a charge. And once we file a charge, that doesn't mean that the communication stops, because sometimes we file a charge, and then by the time we get into a courtroom, the evidence that we thought was there is no longer there. A witness decided they're not going to cooperate, somebody decided they're not going to stick around, or something happens. So that means we communicate again with your detectives to try to make sure we sure up the evidence that we need so that we can decide which way to go in concern of going to trial on the case or negotiating the case to, to a different disposition. So, I wanted to make sure that you all knew that charging was still happening, that your policing agency has continued to send charges over to our office. This does not count for all of the cases, or rather, potential cases that have come. Again, these are only the ones that we said, okay, we're at a point where we can move on this. There are tons of other cases that we have not moved forward at this point and haven't decided, yes, rather not to charge, or I'm sure the police are just waiting for us to make a decision and wanting us to hurry on up with it. And so, those decisions are not included in this packet because they're not finished. I think, lastly, and then I'll open the floor for questions if you have any, is of late, the most recent change that we have done and been in communication with your chief on is concerning misdemeanor domestic violence cases, where my office will begin charging those domestic violence cases in the state DA's office, so that way hopefully it will sure up some resources for, for you all, but more importantly, give victims and survivors of domestic violence the ability to get some of the resources that we have, as well as to hold some of these folks accountable for the crimes concerning domestic violence. And, you know, here, here is where I'm at on domestic violence. Yes, there's a difference between misdemeanor and felony domestic violence, but 36%, I believe, of the murders in our county for the last year has been founded in domestic violence. 36% of our murders. Nationwide, 20% of murders are from domestic violence, which means that Wyandotte County is above the national norm. That's why domestic violence has to be taken seriously. That's why my office will file these cases for Bonner Springs, but more importantly, in all of Wyandotte County, both misdemeanor and felony, regardless of who does it, we want to make sure that all of our citizens are protected. That is all that I have. Thank you for your time, and I will, Mr. Mayor, stand for questions.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming this evening. It's always wonderful to have you here, and I think it's great for our community to have this connection, and appreciate all you do. This back page and the increase in the domestic violence certainly warrants having that special attention and being able to protect those that are victims of that. But the total dispositions that you have on the last page, the dismissed, that would include not guilty?
No, the dismissed would include those that the judge said there was not enough evidence to move forward, so the court dismissed them. Or we decided that we're going to have to just dismiss this case based off of something else. Now, I'll tell you that there are at times when an individual may have multiple cases, and as a part of the negotiation for that plea, they'll take the higher level felony case and will dismiss this case. So if there is a not guilty, that will fall into an acquittal aspect of it.
Other questions for?
I see.
Please.
Mark.
Oh, thank you. Is 29% dismissed, is that up or down on an average? I have no benchmark for that.
It's average, it's average, and I wanted to give you that number just based off of the totality of the last three years. And so, again, these, these percentages is based off of the last three years. And so, when you look at that, and if you split up that 29%, then you're looking at anywhere from 10 to 15% per year. So, it's not a, a high number when you're looking at the totality of it. I'll tell you that our office deals with 14 to 1600 criminal cases on a yearly basis. So when we're dealing with that level and volume of cases, and that's only on the criminal side, not including the civil aspect of things, there are a lot of things that change, and many of those cases, they end up having to go away, and specifically kind of what I touched on a little bit earlier, is we find that you have a lot of people who are willing to, and maybe it's the adrenaline, right? When a crime happens, someone is injured right in front of them, you know, they're in disbelief, they're in shock, police show up, yes, this was the guy who did it, I saw him, he pulled the gun, he did the crime. Well, then you get the court involved, and usually, you're not going to have a court hearing that, that witness is supposed to come to for six months. So now, six months later, we're trying to get that witness, okay, let me change it, the police is trying to get that witness who was pumped up and gong ho the day of in either one or two, well, three things happened. One, they show up and they are just law-abiding and they want to help. Two, they can't find him. Three, they find him and they tell him, I'm not coming. And that oftentimes is the case when we're dealing with high-level crimes. And when that happens, either we try to negotiate the case down to a plea, or we have to dismiss it because we don't have the evidence or the witness.
So out of 1,400 cases, and would it be a 25% guilty average? After that, even though 46% haven't been pled, you have 25% guilty.
No, 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 that's just as of today, that's what has been taken care of. So I still got 46% that is not accounted for because of the backlog, we haven't even got to them. So I can't give you a, an average based off of these last three years. COVID messed all of our average up.
Prior to that, is it?
I couldn't tell you. I could, I, I wish I could, but my focus was try to fill you in on, on the COVID-impacted stuff, but I will go back and look and get you, and get you an average. What I will tell you is that in 2019, our felony conviction rate was raised by 27%, meaning from the year prior, we got 27% more guilty convictions than we did the year prior than me coming in. And so, there was an increase by over 20% in guilty verdicts on our cases, I can tell you that. But having said that, then COVID hit, I can't stand on those numbers because the court was shut down and our cases didn't come in as they were, and so there's a lot of factors that I wouldn't even feel comfortable trying to stand on now.
Is 27% increase on all felonies, or is that a specific type of felony?
27% on all felony convictions, on all felony convictions. And so, the way the conviction rate works is that they look at all of the cases, and my office deals with the majority of felonies, but we do have misdemeanor crimes that come in, but most of my cases are felony cases. And so, they look at, the state does, all of the convictions that you get, that you report, and then they take that percentage and they have it on their books. And so, over a year or 18-month period, there was a 27% increase in those convictions. No problem, thank you for the question.
Yeah, real quickly too. The, during the pandemic, I think you had changed some of your policies because you're trying to reduce the numbers at, in the jail, correct? So a lot of the lower-level crimes, you weren't even, I assume you probably, well, I'll let you explain that, but I'm assuming, once they were, if they were arrested, if it was a low-level crime, they were released fairly quickly back into the public? Is that correct?
So, I can't tell you that for sure because the DA's office has no control over the jail. So the sheriff is the head of the jail. And so, I have no say on whether or not a person is released, in fact, I have no say on whether or not a person has a certain level of bond. A person is arrested, and then the judge determines what the bond is for a person who is arrested. Once that person is given that bond, then they are housed inside the jail, and the only way that they are released is if the sheriff's deputy and/or the court makes that determination. Now, I will tell you, what did happen during COVID is that the court, myself and the, the sheriff, I can't recall if Sheriff Ash, I think he was still there at the beginning, and then it switched over, did make a determination that we need to look really close at whether or not individuals who have low-level crimes are close at whether or not individuals who have low-level crimes, uh, are, uh, a risk to the community or to themselves. Uh, and at that point, I believe the court did, uh, lower some bonds for many of those individuals.
It was one, it, well, I was curious if that is still in effect. And the reason I ask is that, oh, maybe nine months ago, I had a constituent that, who had, um, did his civic duty and let the department know, the police department know of a particular drug activity that was going on, they ended up busting, you know, making the sting on, on the, the home, uh, the location, and, um, within that afternoon, later on that afternoon, the person was back there at the house. And that's why I was curious if, if that's still in play and, and individuals are kind of being almost taken down and they're released?
Well, I can't say that that's still the place. In fact, I've, uh, I received notice that that was not in place some time ago. Uh, but again, the way that the, the system works is once a person arrest, is arrested, the court then makes the determination on what that bond is gonna be. So the state does not have the ability to set a person's bond. We can make a recommendation, uh, but the judge is the one who sets that, uh, bond, whether it is a personal recognizance bond, which sounds like that was the case in concern of your friend, uh, your friend's situation, um, but ultimately, whomever that judge who decided to deal with that charge situation makes that decision.
Right, and I realized it wasn't your office. I thought maybe you might have enough intimate knowledge of the court system to know if they, uh, were falling under.
I would say no. I would say it, it is simply based on who, what, whatever judge looked at that case, uh, and...
May have felt that there, there was no reason to take him, put the person behind bars, go ahead on his own recognizance and go ahead and...
Yes. Uh, unless, the only other way that, that he got out is that, uh, at my office decided not to charge the crime, right? And so going back to what I was saying, when a person is arrested, then the evidence is submitted to my office to determine whether or not a charge should come, right? So, uh, uh, your detective or officer can arrest someone, and they can get them in jail, but then if the information is submitted to my office, and let's say it's elements A, B, and C to actually charge the crime, and we have element A and B, well, we can't charge it. And so now, we have either forty-eight hours for that person, uh, to be released, or forty-eight hours for your police department to go get element C, so that we can charge.
And if you dismiss it, it's dismissed without prejudice, so that way, if the evidence is, ev- you know, eventually, uh, obtained, then the charge is killed. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I had a constituent ask me about a certain case that they had filed, and, uh, it's filed down at the county, and they haven't heard anything on that. And I said, well, you probably call the DA's office. Am I, is that correct?
Yes.
They can find this, find out the status of that?
If, or is, would this person be a victim of a crime?
They were.
Yes, they would be able to call my office and speak with our victim's advocate, and they would be able to give them an update. And I encourage you to tell all of your, uh, constituents if they have a concern or if they need to know what's going on with the case. Uh, I, I, I tell folks all the time, and I just want to make sure that your chief hears me say this, uh, I tell them all not to call the police, they're busy saving lives. Call me, all right? And that way, uh, we can deal with all of the paperwork, we can go ahead and go through, uh, and my victim's advocates make that determination on whether or not, uh, uh, to give them whatever, rather, let me change it, the victim's advocates, their entire job is to give them the information so that they can be aware of what's happening on cases.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll go back and reemphasize that with them.
Yes, and I can give you the phone number.
Okay.
It is nine-one-three, five-nine-three, two-eight-five-one. And anyone can call that number and ask for the victim's advocate. Five-seven-three, thank you, that's his number, too. Five-seven-three-two-eight-five-one.
Hey, thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else have any questions, concerns? Thank you, Mr. Dupree, appreciate it greatly.
No, thank you all, take care.
Moving along to our, an opportunity for those here in the, um, chambers to address the city council about items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stra- stand and address the city council about an item we're not going to discuss on the agenda tonight? An opportunity to do so in the open public meeting? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead to our consent agenda. And the consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the August twenty-second city council meeting, claims for city operations, public use requests for homecoming, a public use request for Junkers Jamboree, and the massage therapy licenses help, uh, for Helping Hands therapeutic massage. Anything to be told by city staff? Citizens? Questions or concerns from the council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Mr. Reeves and signed by Mr. Shannon. Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Onto our first item of business this evening, a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-two budget amendments and the twenty-twenty-three budget. Introduction, staff introduction.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to open a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-two budget amendments and twenty-twenty-three budget, beginning at eight oh seven PM.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Gurley and signed by Mr. Stevens. Now, we'll need a vote please to open the public hearing. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. That's all right.
Um, just to kind of kick this off, again, this is the twenty-twenty-three budget calendar as we've worked through it. So again, this is a process that starts back at the very beginning of the year, to be honest with you, but, uh, really starts hitting up in the beginning of May. Um, the bold, um, uh, letters in there signify a public meeting, uh, was held during those, those times. So again, I just want to kind of give everybody a, a good understanding of where we've been, um, in hopes that that helps understand where we're going. So again, this is just a, a very small, and I apologize, but it probably illustrates the, the magnitude of it all, uh, all the budgeted funds the city has. So again, we've got a blank screen. Um, we've got four funds, uh, altogether. General fund, which is, uh, your typical operational funds for city departments. We also have what are called enterprise funds, which are business activity accounts. Um, so again, water, sanitary sewer, uh, stormwater, solid waste are included in there. Debt service is a standalone fund, um, to handle, uh, debt, principal and interest. And then, uh, all the, all in all, we have about twenty-two, actually, well, twenty-two special revenue, uh, accounts. Those are predominantly accounts where we want to try to track, uh, the actual activity in the fund, um, similar to a, an enterprise or a business account, but, um, case in point would be, um, a lot of the recreation programs are held in, in these types of accounts. Just again, so we're able to see what the fees are, are generating versus what our, um, our expenses are so that we can set things appropriately. And, um, again, there's several of those. So again, this is, uh, just taking a little bit step further, but budgeted funds, um, for our particular budget, as you can see, um, general is, is fifty-three percent of exactly our, our, our total overall budget, special revenue accounts for seventeen, those enterprise business accounts are, are twenty-eight percent. And then the library, uh, is also included within our, um, our millage that, um, is assessed. So that's, that also takes in about two percent, uh, of the total overall, uh, funds. So the general fund, I'm just gonna kind of go through, um, some of this at a high level, and if there's questions, feel free to just, um, ask, but again, this is a lot of, of repeat. So the twenty-twenty-three, uh, budget, um, includes a lot of, uh, different things influencing it. Uh, first and foremost is, is personnel, uh, within the budget. Uh, that's, um, budgeting's a six percent increase, broken out between a three percent COLA and a three percent merit. Um, just to understand that, that's for each one percent, that's about sixty thousand dollars, uh, as an impact, so all, overall, it's about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, um, there. Uh, a big part of this is also the fire department full-time transition, so we've been working on that for, and I'll have a slide here in a little bit, um, but working towards transitioning our formerly volunteer fire department, um, to consolidate with a EMS operation. So that took place a couple of years ago. Um, we've transitioned into a part-time model, um, this, uh, for this twenty-twenty-three budget cycle, that takes it the next step forward, uh, which is, um, going to a full-time, um, uh, department. Obviously, I think we all know, uh, inflation economics has played a pretty significant, uh, impact on, on all budgets, um, increase in cost of goods and services, commodities, um, as well as our contracts, our contracts agreements. I, I think we probably get noticed, um, every other day, it seems, from some contractor or vendor that we work with, letting us know that prices are going up. Um, so that's a, that's a good, um, a, a good influence on our, rather, an influence on our, our budget. And then lastly, our, our fund balance, capital improvements, uh, the CIP, um, is something that we've been working on, um, for several years. This year, we're actually looking to transfer about seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine, seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to the CIP, to fund the CIP. Uh, that does maintain a fifty-one percent fund balance in doing that, so it's still, uh, considered, uh, a healthy fund balance by all, by all measures. Uh, and then also, it includes a, a one percent contingency within, um, the budget. Those are, again, for things that come up out of the blue, um, we're caring about, uh, again, exactly one percent of our overall budget there. It's gonna be small, but, um, financial summary, uh, this is just, again, a breakout of all the revenues for the city, and you can, uh, you can kind of see where the fluctuations have been. Overall, and we're looking at about a nine percent increase on the overall, um, in, uh, overall revenue stream for the city, uh, for the general fund. The, the two big ones, uh, for the city are the sales tax, that's the largest source of general fund revenue, it's about forty-three percent, uh, of the revenue coming in the general fund is from sales tax. Uh, again, you can see from this chart here, this is just generally, uh, year over year, what has fluctuated in that account, and you can kind of see the leveling out there, uh, as we went through COVID, uh, and then a, a spike, uh, in twenty-twenty-one. If you go out a few years, um, prior to twenty-eighteen, you do see steady growth there. Um, but again, it, it really flattened, uh, flattened in, in twenty-twenty-one, or, excuse me, twenty-twenty, and we're starting to rebound, uh, through that. Property tax, uh, this is the second largest, this is about thirty-one percent, uh, of the overall revenue stream for the city. The big thing that you'll see there is the assessed valuation, um, in the, I, I'd say, really, truly prior to twenty-twenty-three, a lot of that increase is just because of, uh, growth predominantly, a lot of industrial, a lot of business, um, new residential is part of why those increases have gotten, um, through twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-two. Property taxes, um, again, this is just to give everybody a little bit of an understanding of, of where your property taxes go. So for every dollar that's generated in property taxes in Wyandotte County and Bonner Springs, this is the breakout, um, of where it's actually going. So, um, for our purposes of, for a dollar, of every dollar that goes, um, into property taxes, twenty-three percent of that is going, excuse me, twenty-three cents or twenty-three percent, however you want to say it, is ultimately going to the city. The rest is broken out by those other jurisdictions. Um, so again, that puts us, um, towards the bottom of the list as far as where everything's at. Can I see that? This is a, um, you'll see on the bottom, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget, twenty-twenty-three, um, proposed. This is the, uh, actual expenses out of each department. So again, you can see some consistencies. The big one is, is probably, uh, worth mentioning is the fire department there in the middle. Again, that's just reflective of the investments that the city is, uh, has made in that, um, in that department specifically on the, the personnel side. Um, but beyond that, you can see some general consistency. You do see, again, in twenty, um, excuse me, twenty-twenty-one, I believe, is where it's at, twenty-twenty-two, you see a little bit of a drop there. Again, that's, uh, where we kind of tighten the belt, um, with, uh, the impact of COVID still unknown in the midst of trying to put a budget together, uh, during all of that as well, so... So this is just another breakout of, uh, general fund departmentally, where, where the funds are, uh, actually going to on a, um, on an expense side. So again, uh, police department's at thirty, thirty percent of that, fire department's at eighteen, um, and then, uh, the others are, are obviously listed there. The other is broken out on the right, uh, column there, um, graph, and those are everything that's, um, under five percent. So again, that just, I think, gives a, a good visualization of, um, exactly where the funds are, are going for the city. Then lastly, as far as the general fund is concerned, the capital improvement planning, uh, again, I mentioned this earlier, but, um, this is, uh, going to see a, a shift of about seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars coming out of the general fund reserve to help finance, uh, those capital improvements, capital equipment, um, items that are in the, um, in the CIP that was, uh, distributed earlier during this process. And we'll come back to this eventually, uh, as well, to re, uh, reconfirm, uh, reapprove, um, the CIP as it extends one more year with every passing year. Enterprise funds, um, I'm gonna kind of walk through these a little bit, and Tillie's gonna jump in, uh, I think, as needed. But before I get, um, to that, I do want to make clear that within the recommended budget, um, for the millage, it is being recommended to reduce the property tax, uh, millage for the city by one mil. So that's, um, not necessarily highlighted with, with, uh, anything in particular on there, but, uh, that has been something we were able to do based off of, um, conversations with the council, input of the public. Um, we are, we are, um, taking that into consideration with this budget and dropping, dropping that down. So, uh, the enterprise, Tillie, I don't know if you want to kind of pop through those?
Uh, the enterprise funds, those are the funds that are more a business model. Uh, user fees for water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste are used to fund the expenses for those funds, so no tax dollars are used, uh, for these, um, as... Um, we've got, uh, increases every year that we have to because of, um, increased, um, just like general fund, increase in cost of, of personnel and, uh, contractual and commodities. Water fund for twenty-twenty-three, we're proposing a five percent rate increase, and that's what's built into the water budget. Wastewater is an eight percent increase, um, and stormwater, uh, we've got a three-dollar per month increase for not, for residential, and a five-fifty per month for non-residential. And then the solid waste fund, which is really just a pass-through from the UG contract, is a seventy-five cent per month increase. This shows the water fund, our twenty-twenty-one actuals, uh, current twenty-twenty-two budget. The water fund is a fund, I think, we'll talk about at the end. There's three funds that need to be amended, the water fund is one of them. Um, so we've got the twenty-twenty-two amended budget column, and then twenty-twenty-three proposed. That revenue total does include, uh, the five percent rate increase. And we do have a healthy fund balance in the water. Uh, I think we talked with council earlier this year about needing to finance, uh, the large... I think we talked with council earlier this year about needing to finance the large water treatment plant project, and so, this, we've kind of, over the past few years, built up that so that the impact, once we do get that built, isn't as much on user fees. Wastewater, this fund has the 8% increase in revenue, and this has less than a three-month reserve right now. That's why we're proposing an 8% increase so that we can keep a good reserve. We like to see at least three months, but this is a little less than three. Stormwater, this, the revenue proposal for this goes, again, it doubles the residential rate, which is now $3 a month to $6 a month, and the commercial from $5.50 a month to $11 a month. And that's just because the number of stormwater projects that we need to do just keeps increasing. And the solid waste fund, again, this is pretty much a pass-through of our contract with the unified government. We do have a transfer in each of our enterprise funds that goes to the general fund of 5%, and that's for the administration side of all of those funds, the billing. In this solid waste fund, there's a lot of administrative with taking calls, and it's also part of the billing process, so. Any questions on the enterprise funds? Again, there's three budget amendment funds where we need budget amendments. The soccer fund, uniform costs went up a lot, so that fund needs to be amended by 3,500 for 2022. The wastewater fund, we've got the lift station number two design that we need to fund this year. That was an unexpected expense that we didn't know about when we put together the budget. And then, the water fund has a 2022 amendment of 150,000 for additional purchases of BPU water, and also the meter data services for the new meter upgrade project. So, those are requests for 2022 budget amendments. I think that's all we've got. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Very good. I'm sorry.
Comments from the public?
Yep, yep, that's the next option. Would anyone like to stand and ask questions concerning the budget this year? You're welcome to address those, we'll get those answered for you. Both the proposed budget for '23 and the amendments for '22. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and ask for questions, concerns, comments from the council. We'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
The, I noticed that overall revenue, talking about an increase of about a million. Is that, a lot of that because of the fire department, or?
Sorry, on the expenses or the revenue?
On the revenue, shows a, jumping from 95, 9.4 mil to 10.4 mil on the sheet that we were given.
Oh, yeah. So, a lot of that's gonna be, there's two big ones. First one's gonna be the sales tax, that's up about $300,000, and then a 15% increase on property taxes overall.
Right, but I didn't know if we were gonna have expenses, that we need that extra mil, was, that's what I'm...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't. I think when you get into the expense side of things, again, that was the balancing act, so we actually had more revenue coming in than our expenses. I think with, with everything that has been talked about through this process and the feedback, you know, I, I think, again, our recommendation is that we're, we're able to reduce the, the overall millage by 1 mil and still be in pretty good shape, all things considered.
Well, we have enough increase in expenses that we need to justify the revenue going up by a million. That's what I'm trying to...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, like I said, I think the, the personnel side is almost $400,000 in and of itself. Then, you get into the fire department transition, I can't recall exactly what that ultimately amounted to, but again, it, it's quickly consumed on, on that. Plus, I think on average, we were, you know, probably about 5 to 6% increases on the commodity side when you start to go through all the departmental budgets as an average, so.
I think the fire department, just in its, just its budget from 2022 to 2023 was 375,000 just by itself.
That's what I was basically looking, making sure we had an increase in expenses that enough to justify that extra mil, so, thank you.
On the non-budgeted funds, the 5 million from 2021, is that all COVID relief, ARPA kinda stuff in the revenues? So, it's 5 million and 90 additional that we don't have in the other year? I don't know who I'm asking that to. Probably Taylor.
What are you looking at?
On the revenues, for the summary of budget hearing, it says non-budgeted funds, 5 million, which boosted our...
That's our, so that's our fund balance.
That's, are you looking at 2020?
2021.
Yeah. That's, we have some funds, like project funds, that aren't budgeted, and in the actual year, we have to show those numbers, the expenses. You don't show them in the budgeted years because they're non-budgeted funds, but when you put together this budget notice, you have to show, a lot of them are projects that don't get budgeted and are funded with debt, but it's a requirement of the state to show those non-budgeted funds. So, next year, when we do 2024, 2022, we'll have a line item that shows non-budgeted funds.
So, that was probably debt for the buildings or something like that?
It was probably, I mean, I can't remember what project, a lot of it is projects that we do that are, yeah, transferred for debt, so.
Does it, does it itemize COVID money, ARPA money, any of that outside of this? Is that not in the...
Like the, yeah, like the ARPA money was not a budgeted fund, so the grant funds don't have to be budgeted, so those aren't in here. We use ours for the water treatment plant, so those don't show up in what we're approving for budget, but then they're gonna show up, like, that's part of what we spent last year in the non-budgeted funds. And next year, it'll show up, it doesn't show up in the 2022 column or the 2023 column, but we're gonna spend it, and it'll show up next year that we spent it in the non-budgeted funds.
Okay, so it doesn't show up under revenues?
No.
Okay, but it'll appear this year as an expenditure, one of the line items will go up?
In, in a non-budgeted fund, it won't show up in a budgeted fund.
Okay. Okay. And on the, the revenues for, it seems like on the decreases, fines and court fees, is there some reason those are down specifically?
That's what I wanted to ask, yeah.
I just didn't know why fines and court fees are down. Is it something to do with...
Are we doing better?
COVID or...
I think part of it is...
Service charges.
Some of it's less crime, to be honest. Yeah.
Okay, well, that makes, I just...
Better compliance on court days.
Those seem to go lockstep, and they were two of the, really, two of the only decreases. They all kinda had to do with each other. Animal fees, or is that recreation fees? Recreation fees.
Right, yeah, recreation's down a little bit, but, and again, that's, that's 2022 budget, 2023 budget, so by and large, we are fairly conservative on revenue projections too, so we try to continue that as far, as far as the city's budgeting practices have always been that, trying to be as conservative as we can be on revenue, knowing, again, sales tax is a pretty yo-yo potential. You know, COVID's a good example of that, when $600,000 of our revenue is, is the casino, and the casino shuts down for several months out of the year, so, again, that's, those are, those are budgeted, not actual, as far as 2022, 2023, but they're based on actuals from prior year.
Okay, thank you.
Why would licenses be down?
They're business licenses, so at-home businesses are, are an example, Chris, I don't know.
We have, those tend to fluctuate too, because all of our, like, our alcoholic beverage licenses are by year, for two years to correlate with the state, and so, you'll see a lot of from year to year on those.
Makes sense.
A lot of those are also due, I think, the notices go out at the end of the year, and they're due the first of the year, so some of them might get, like, pay one in January, and they pay it in December for the next year. So, it kind of fluctuates a little bit because of that.
Mark, to hopefully answer part of your question, I asked Judge Hutton at the mayor's banquet that same question as to, you know, how everything was doing here court-wise, was this working out? And he said, actually, Zooming has been, and online has been a lot, a lot more helpful for him, and they're, they're getting things done a lot more effective that way too. I think Mark Dupree kind of alluded to that, you know, where they don't have to show, or they don't have to take off work, or even though we have court in the evening, but I don't know, does that, does that help at all? Because I, I thought yours was a good question, and...
Well, I was just curious why they might be down.
Yeah.
I understand the efficiencies and Zoom stuff, so hopefully that helps everybody, and still affects the same...
He, he seemed to say it was, but...
No other questions, concerns, or comments? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and take, entertain a motion to close the public hearing at 8:32 PM.
So moved.
Removed by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Onto item number two, to approve the 2022 budget amendments and the 2023 budget. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the 2022 budget amendments, the 2023 budget expenditures of $29,927,213, and the 2022 ad valorem tax for the 2023 budget in the amount of $4,420,687.
Second.
So, moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens. And do we have any additional questions, concerns, comments from the council?
Just to think staff.
Very good. Didn't think so? Go ahead and vote, please.
Would?
Yes.
Yep.
No.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Since our last, since last June, our campaign has knocked on at least 3,500 doors. We've talked to over 1,000 people from 142nd Street to 635. Almost all the people that I have personally talked to say the high inflation combined with yearly increasing property tax is their main concern. The people are angry, they're frustrated, and they want to see a change. They are very vocal about their dire situation. The older and retired people are getting hit the hardest and are the most vocal. They don't care that the assessed values, value of their homes increased, they are on fixed incomes. They are really upset at the increase in their property tax and going to gas station or grocery store and paying higher prices. They are struggling financially. I know a lot of good work has gone into this budget, but I must vote no, based on the direct feedback I have heard from the people.
Mayor, the motion passes 5 to 2.
Very good. Onto item number three, the public hearing for Sandstone Townhomes Rural Housing Initiative District. Staff?
Do you wanna open the public hearing, or do you want me to...
Oh, there, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing at 8:35 PM.
So moved.
Second. So, moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Staff?
Thank you, Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. This is a public hearing to hear comments on the establishment of the Sandstone RHID. This development is the one just north of Feldman's on 130th Street. It will have 142 and three-bedroom market-rate rental townhomes, along with some community recreation amenities and some public infrastructure. This RHID would allow for 75% of the incremental real property taxes, less a 1% administrative fee which would come to us, to be available to the developer for reimbursement for eligible expenses, which are infrastructure and things like that, for a period of 10 ye, or 15 years, or until it reaches an amount of 5 million, whichever comes first. And at that point, the reimbursement percentage would reduce by 5%, giving us 5% more each year for the remainder of the 25-year term or until reaching the RHID cap. Originally, the cap was set at 6.3 million. After some discussions, it's been reduced down to 5.3. There aren't any changes in the infrastructure costs, it was just a, a difference in the original calculations. And I've included an updated spreadsheet in your packets to kinda go over what that looks like to the developer and to the taxing jurisdictions. We have Tyler Ellsworth here that can answer questions on, he's with QTAC Rock, he can answer questions on some of the agreements or the RHID details, and then we also have Alex Howe, the developer here.
Very good. Anything to add, gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tyler Ellsworth with QTAC Rock. The only items, couple items to add maybe, just for your consideration this evening, once the public hearing is concluded, if you decide that it's appropriate to conclude it, there's an ordinance that's before you for consideration that approves the development plan that Ms. Vogon just described, and also establishes the RH, RHID district, puts that in place for a 25-year term. The third thing that that ordinance does is it approves the form of the development agreement between the city and the developer. And that agreement is, as of this evening, in substantially final form. There are a couple items that are open there that we need to include, a couple additional exhibits, but I don't need, I don't think that, at this point, this evening, that that needs to delay your approval of the ordinance. I will say that, for his part, Mr. Howe has been a great partner to work with, and has been easy to deal with, and so I fully expect that to continue, and probably in the next week or so, we'll be in a position to finalize the development agreement. Having said all that, what's before you in the packet this evening is substantively the deal that we will expect to sign up in the next week or so. There won't be any substantive changes, so, just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Very good, thank you. Gentlemen, do you have anything to add?
I'm ready to go.
Very good. Anything from anyone else in the audience like to stand and address the council, ask any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing now at 8:39, or entertain a motion to close the public hearing at 8:39.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing's closed, we'll move on to the next item, an ordinance to establish the Sandstone Rural Housing Initiative District, Incentive District. I don't know that there's any additional staff, if you have anything else to report?
I'm happy to answer any questions, as Alex said this, or, sorry, Tyler, said this kinda wraps up the RHID process. If this is approved tonight, there'll be a 30-day protest period in which... If this is approved tonight, there'll be a 30-day protest period in which the county or the school district would be able to come forward and formally protest. However, we presented to the Board of Education earlier this month and they were very supportive of the project, so I don't foresee any, anything coming forward.
Very good. Nothing else to add, no other questions, concerns, I'd entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agreement, oops, sorry, wrong one. Make a motion to adopt an ordinance establishing a rural housing incentive district within the city and adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the district.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Questions, concerns, comments from the council, sir?
Yeah, what was the length of time that this incentive is going to last? Again?
The initial period is 15 years or until it reaches a reimbursement amount of five million. And at that point, whichever comes first, it will reduce the amount that's reimbursed to the developer by 5% each year through the end of the term, which is 25 years, or until reaching the RHID cap of 5.3 million, whichever comes first.
Yeah, it seemed, 15 years seems a little long, but haven't we been doing 10 years in the past?
This is the first time we've had a rural housing incentive district, for IRBs, they are 10 years. For rural housing incentive, they allow up to 25.
Okay. Real quickly, just, I know she mentioned in the memo, 5.3 million, but I noticed the spreadsheet was 6.3 million.
Oh, was it still?
So I was just curious if it is 5.3, it's just.
It is 5.3.
So we can just look at the spreadsheet and whenever we see 5.3 hit that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's it.
And I can provide a new.
Want to clarify?
Nothing, nothing.
Very good, no other questions, concerns, comments, vote please?
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you very much, congratulations, welcome to Bonner Springs again. This is the first opportunity we've had to utilize the rural housing incentive district and it looks like it's going to be a, a very useful tool in helping to increase the house, affordable housing income, housing inventory. We appreciate that. Yes, thank you. Onto item number five, Kansas Avenue Engineering Design and Service Agreement. Staff?
Frank Abart, Public Works Director. Good evening, what I have before you this evening is an agreement for engineering, design, services related to two 60-inch culverts underneath Kansas Avenue. The general location is 137th and Kansas Avenue. Most of you probably know or recognize it as the area where this orange fence is on the north side and has been for several years. This deterioration in these culverts, they're corrugated metal culverts at this point, and they're reaching the point where they are now starting to fail and that's going to cause a deflection in the roadway eventually and things of that nature. So this is too big a project for us as a department to do, so we're going to have to probably hire a contractor of some type, which leads us to plans and specifications and other design criteria that we need to meet for drainage in the area. I think that's probably all I have to summarize, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you, any other questions, concerns, comments from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agreement with Wilson Company Incorporated for engineering services associated with culvert replacement design at 137th and Kansas Avenue in the amount of $18,875. Second.
So moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Stevens, questions, concerns, comments from the council, we'll start here.
Assuming this will cause a complete closure of that road for some time?
Maybe not, we're going to try to design it so it could have at least one lane of traffic.
What's a?
Won't know till we get into it.
Right, what's a best-case scenario on what the time it would take to complete the actual work? What's a worst-case scenario?
Yeah, good one.
It's a stretch either way, but I'd say if we were willing to pay for it to be done in an accelerated fashion, probably still take three months.
Really?
If you wanted to realistically do it as a project, you're probably talking at least six to eight months minimum.
Holy cow, okay, thank you.
And what's your projected start date?
Well, we haven't even got it designed yet, so I would like to be doing it in 2023. And we haven't yet fully identified, we have kind of an idea that this is going to be roughly $300,000 to $350,000, which of course we don't have in the stormwater fund. So we have some ideas that I'm going to be discussing with our city manager in the morning about how to fund the project, but we'll have some time to get that done.
Very good. I'm sorry.
I'm assuming the two you're talking about are the two that kind of border the Lake Valley entrances?
Yeah, well, it's, they're actually, there's the east entrance and then this is just east of there. There's two big culverts under there.
Okay, not the west one, because I noticed that one, the west one, you've got the sidewalk closed there.
Right, the west one, we haven't quite figured out what we're going to do there yet, but we are going to address right off, right off the north side of Kansas. There's like a 30-foot vertical drop. And in order to prevent the erosion that's taking place there, we're, we're going to go ahead and fix that. I think we just got the PO today, actually, to try and repair that part of it. But the rest of it that's going underneath Kansas, and there's a couple of drop inlets and stuff.
So these two are actually close to that east entrance?
These two are over on the east side that we're talking about doing the design work here. We haven't developed a solution yet on the west side, that'll be yet to come.
Is, is that where the deep drainage ravine is?
Yeah. The, the west one or the?
The east one.
The east one, I, I wouldn't say it's real deep, but it is on the north side, it drops off into a ravine for this one that we're talking about here. But yeah, it's two 60-inch culverts at this point. That's a lot of water.
Side by side?
Yeah, they're side by side, yeah. For now.
Anything else? No other questions, concerns, comments, vote please?
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. Onto item number six, an ordinance to adopt the standard traffic ordinance, 49th edition, staff?
Chris Break City Clerk, for the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Offense Code, which is the next item, annually, the League of Kansas Municipalities publishes these documents for us and then the city attorney and the police chief look at them and have given approval to pass them as suggested in the agenda.
Very good. Anything else from staff? No, staff, no. Very good, questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an ordinance to adopt the standard traffic ordinance, 49th edition.
Second.
So moved and seconded, moved by Mr. Thompson and seconded by Mr. Stevens, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start back down here. Chief, are there many, any changes or is pretty, any things?
There's probably changes, a lot of them are sentencing wise. There's a few changes, I don't think there's anything that will be alarming, but the. Most of it has to do with process.
But the changes, not getting into detail, but are there any there that'll be more helpful for our department, you and the department?
No, overall, nothing's really changed. Pay to pay for us, the charges are still the same, the crimes are still the same.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Very good, thank you, seeing no, no other questions, concerns, comments, vote please?
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto item number seven, which is an ordinance to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code, the 38th edition. Staff?
Same information.
Very good, any other questions, concerns, comments from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance to adopt the Uniform Public Offense Code, 38th edition.
Second. So moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments, we'll start down here.
Are the sections that were omitted covered in other, under other articles and sections?
Most of the exceptions that are in there are covered in our municipal code, or they've been omitted through our municipal policy.
Okay, thank you.